All right, good evening. Welcome to today's session of August 12th. Mary, you do a little call.
Yes, I will. Councilmember Flesch.
Here.
Councilmember Sterns.
Here.
Councilmember Gilmore.
Here.
Mayor Nisco.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Sapp.
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Thanks for working.
Tonight's study session is about the comprehensive plan. Many economic development director is not with us tonight, so I believe Jay Mark and.
Let me start well. Kirsten's trying to get up to speed. Yeah. Yeah, if you don't mind.
I've decided to update about eight minutes ago.
Yeah.
PowerPoint, but I'm like. Anyway.
If um. All those fails, I can share over there too, right? Did we, did we? Did we receive?
I forwarded it to just you. Well, I forwarded it to you and. Oh, see if maybe.
Or. You can email it to me. I'm already logged in there, Mary, and I can load it on there. How about that? We'll figure this out.
If it might work.
There we go. We're getting close. We're getting close, but um. Yeah, as Mr. Mayor said, um, this is the first. Study session um for our comprehensive plan update. A lot of work has been gone into this. I want to recognize the steering committee that has been working on this. Providing input and guidance um. To um to staff and to our consultant team working on this. As you know, this is in parallel with Mason County. And so there's a lot of synergy and a lot of work um working with particularly. We're not going to get into a lot of nuts and bolts here that. Um, but um, this is kind of staging for another study session. Most likely in September, um, we'll get some feedback. Right to um better understand kind of um with some of the questions, some of the feedback from you where we're going to go and give us an opportunity to to go back, regroup a little bit and um. And refine some of the elements. So we'll be in worked on. Um, so you know, land use and transportation, things like that will will come down the pike at a little later date. So. Um, guess one thing, well, Kirsten's getting forward. I am heading out tonight as the mayor mentioned, uh, Washington City Managers Association Conference in Walla Walla. Uh, for next couple of days, I'll be back Friday, Friday morning. So I canceled briefings on Thursday already. Um, council member SAP and council member Sterns and then council member Gutierrez and Mayor Nisco and. Um, yes, Thursday, council member Gilmore on Friday. I'm happy to schedule. I've got fairly open schedule on Friday, though, so I'm happy to schedule something. Again, Friday, when I get back, I apologize. I didn't already send that link out to you or send a meeting notice. So please feel free to. Reach out. We can do that now if you like to um schedule something at an alternate date. And we're making progress here.
Did you want to do a quick introduction?
Jason, please.
Um, you should have seen in your packet, you have a draft. You know, mostly formatted partial document that includes uh what, one, two, three, four, five chapters, the introduction. Parks and Recreation element, capital facilities and utilities element, shoreline and economic development element. Um. I personally, I don't expect as much input from uh uh. Council members on this. I mean, the meat of a comp plan is basically your land use element, housing element, and the transportation element. Those are all being drafted right now. They'll be coming to you shortly. Um. A lot of the information that's in what you receive tonight is informed by plans we've already adopted. Like, for example, capital facilities elements, that's informed by our our sewer comprehensive plan, our water comprehensive plan, our storm drainage plans. Um, the shoreline element is verbatim out of our shoreline master program. You know, these are point being, these are, these are largely lifted from other documents and consolidating them and coordinating them with. You know, our our goals, policies for land use, for development with with the countywide planning policies, those sorts of things. And what we've got here today is uh our consultant, Kirsten Peterson from SCJ. She's been uh. Driving a lot of this with uh Director Hill and she's going to kind of give you, you know, just. In my view, kind of a comprehensive plan one O one, you know, what's what's comprehensive plan? What are some of the changes in these chapters for Shelton? What have we done to date? I think we're going to talk a little bit about population numbers and where they came from. That that'll be talked a lot more. At a future meeting when we talk housing and land use, but I'll turn it over to Kirsten if.
No, I can speak. It's um just. For whatever reason, my computer decided to do a bunch of updates today and then I finally turned on and I'm trying to get access to my network, but. Um, first of all, I I haven't actually met you guys yet, so I I work with SCJ Alliance and I've. When I first joined, it was May of last year. I'd come from the public sector, so I had been. A community development director and I'm almost at twenty years in the working for planning, in planning. And so I'm used to kind of being in the role of. Like city staff. And so anyway, it's kind of fun to like work smaller communities. I love working with small communities, but. So Jason gave a little bit of an introduction. There is a handout that you had on your desk and it probably was in your council packet too, but we brought a hard copy. And it's just a kind of a summary of a little bit of the requirements for upper updates to comprehensive plans. And then there's a breakdown of what changed from the old plan to the new plan um per element that you're getting. So. In here on page. Four of your um document, there's a table contents comparison. It's pretty much the same. Um, you've got your introduction, land use chapter. Something that changed was we had a separate chapter ten, which is urban growth area. That we've now merged with land use. And then you've still got parks and rec, transportation, housing, capital facilities and utilities, shoreline, historic preservation and economic development. And the new chapter ten is going to be the required state required climate change and resiliency chapter. But it looks like my PowerPoint is finally. Coming up, so that's good to know. And now what I need to do is actually get in onto the Zoom account. So I have a PowerPoint that just kind of mimics and follows along with. This information here. So we provided you with a lot of information. We didn't intend for you to read through every minute section of it. If you did, awesome. I don't know who had that much time over the weekend, but that'd be great. Just kind of introduce you to it today and we'll go through five of the chapters, just real quick summary. And then if you have feedback, you know, things you want to prioritize, let us know. But this is kind of your first flush introduction. To what is included in the comp plan was required to be included in the comp plan. And then we want to hear from the city council, even though the steering committee has been working on it. Um, this is the group that's going to be adopting the plan. So we want to make sure it meets your goals and priorities, you know, you know, hearing from the community and what they had recommended. Um, I need to get into. Uh, the link which Donna did send me earlier.
Yeah.
Had everything queued up. We had a meeting before this meeting and it was all queued up and ready to go. And then I walked in here and it.
Screen went bad.
Excited to do it, stuff that being and they've been watching it like, oh, my goodness. Um, ah. It's being really sensitive right now. Okay, join the Zoom meeting. There's all these things scrolling right now. Doing these fun things. Um, so I kind of went into what's changed with your current comp plan for the new plan. But basically, the state gives really specific guidance on what you're supposed to include in it. And a comprehensive plan is really a twenty year plan for growth. It's like looking at over the horizon. How are you, how are we going to grow over time? And the biggest thing that you need to look at is. How much population are you projecting to grow by over the twenty year planning horizon? And the state has a formula that you're supposed to follow. For calculating that, but they allow for you to look at the difference between um low, medium and high growth. But we worked with the county to figure out what those population projections would be. Sorry, it's still working here. Uh, we used a sub consulting firm called FCS Group where they they do some the those kinds of data analyses. And spent a lot of time, a few months, really kind of diving into different scenarios and figuring out what the population growth would be. And so we've come up with how much we need to project for in Shelton. I always say it doesn't mean you're actually going to get that exact number of population growth, but we need to plan for that and be prepared. Infrastructure wise, you know, utilities, your transportation, your road network. But also we start looking at, well, what does that mean for the development code? And do we need to? Look at what we allow in the different zoning districts? Do we need to change the zoning districts, add any new zoning designations? What can we do over time to accommodate the new growth? Wow, it finally. Finally let me join and then we'll see if we can actually connect the PowerPoint too. Thank you. No, that's great. So um, the state has a lot of really specific guidance for what you include in comprehensive plan and there's a checklist that you're supposed to follow. And then one of the key things is as they come out with new housing legislation, we need to make sure that we're. Um, accounting for the new legislation within the comp plan. It might, it's typically within the goals and policies. But sometimes it's in studies that you might need to do. So um today is going to be kind of just a quick introduction. And okay, let me get back to the PowerPoint. Pulled up an old one too. Okay, so. I am able to share a screen, correct?
Yep.
Okay. And this is just to kind of guide us through this because it's a eighteen page document, which is a lot shorter than. I don't know, what'd you get, a hundred pages or so? Um, just to give you a summary. Oh, great. Look at that. It actually is working. Oh, my goodness. And then. Hopefully, my computer works amazingly tomorrow with all these updates, right? That'd be awesome. Okay. Definitely don't need to turn up the volume. So and I'll just say we pulled some pictures offline or from online, and so we've tried to have fun with that for this PowerPoint, but. Um, this is really more about sharing the information in here. Okay. It will. Progress. Ah, okay. All right. Well, first, we're going to start with a summary of what's in the comp plan. So as we've discussed, the steering committee has been working on this for well over a year. And really, we just want to make sure it's in compliance with the Growth Management Act. A lot of communities just want to make sure you're just meeting the minimum requirement. Some decide to go a little bit above and beyond. They want to study other things. So we're just going to summarize those state requirements, um, talk about the updates we've made so far, highlight next steps, but. We want to give you the opportunity to start looking at this in advance of the adoption, which we're planning for December. So here we are. Um, beginning of August and this is where. We're nearing the end of finalizing this, but we want you to start seeing what's going on so that it's not a surprise to you later. So a little bit of background. It used to be that the jurisdictions had to update their comp plan every eight years. There's some new legislation that changed it to every ten years. Um, but there's a five year check endpoint, so we're not even sure exactly what that's going to look like moving forward. So the update to the comp plan needs to make sure we address changes in state law. I mentioned that. We have to demonstrate that we're. Um, how are we going to plan for the growth and population and how does that impact land use? There's definitely some new housing legislation out there. There's been this huge priority at the state level to make sure that. Um, we're increasing opportunities for housing across the state, both in terms of housing um. Stock, that there's enough housing available, which impacts affordability and affordability. And so one of the ways I do that is trying to get jurisdictions to increase the density, whereas maybe in the past you allowed only one unit per lot. What could you try to, you know, so they're they've got new eighty eighty legislation and middle housing legislation out there. Um, there's also new environmental regulations and some engagement requirements that you have to reach out to. The un- underserved and vulnerable populations, you have to demonstrate they've made efforts to do that. And then we want to make sure it's aligned with the countywide planning policies. So a lot of work went into doing that earlier. I want to say probably back in August of last year, we really started diving into some work between the city and the county on the CPPs. So we really want to make sure that the plan is relevant to Shelton. Um, we've taken the existing one, we've updated it, and then we want to be. Um, responding to the forecasts and what the priorities are of the city council. So diving a little bit deeper into the state mandates. You had House Bill twelve twenty that requires cities to accommodate for all income levels. And include emergency housing and shelter regulations in your codes. Um, House Bill twelve forty one is the one that changed the cycle from eight years to ten with that five year implementation report. House Bill seventeen seventeen strengthens tribal consultation during the planning process. House Bill eight fifty eight twenty eight and others, that's where you're trying to reduce the barriers to housing production, a variety of methods for doing that. Um, with this process, we're looking more at having policies that will lend themselves to some zoning flexibility. Maybe allowing more multifamily housing, having some overlays. And then House Bill eleven eighty one has a lot of very climate change impacts. Where you have to do that. So your new chapter ten will focus on climate planning or resilience. Know what we're doing to that? It's just something important that actual hazards are in the, are new. The drought or wild land fires or flooding. And so what are actions that you can take? So it's going to really tie into the hazard mitigation plan. So we want to make it relevant and and fortunately, we don't have to worry about some of the other counties have to look at greenhouse gas. Um, gas emissions reductions. We don't have to focus on that here in Shelton based on the population side. Um, so the comp plan update requirements themselves are what we're looking at next. Um. In addition to the comp plan, there's some concurrent periodic require periodic update requirements regarding up. Development code, but that will come after you update the comp plan. We'll set your goals and policies. And then those will guide the updates to your development code. That will come later. Also need to update your critical areas ordinance and that will kind of come later. What we're going to do from our um consulting perspective is. Provide a summary to Jason and other staff of like, these are the record that there is. That on, so we just want you to be aware that's coming. Um, we also need to be looking closely at the urban growth area. Um, that is where potential growth could happen. Can't get it into the city limits. So as part of the land use process, we just need to make sure that your GA has capacity. To serve the anticipated population, have new housing, um accommodate for how or the employment projections through the next twenty years. So those will be addressed in land use, housing and economic development chapters. Um. And I pointed this out before, but your current plan has a standalone UGA chapter and we're we're just like merging it because they were really quite separated. It used to be chapter two land use and then chapter ten was the UGA and. Just had to flip between chapters. So now we're just compiling it all. It'll be a little bit long chapter, but you'll find it all in one place that way. Um, and then we just wanted to share just a little bit about the projections. In twenty twenty two, it showed your population at ten thousand forty four. And the projection for twenty forty four is twelve thousand nine eighty eight. Some of the studies we've done have taken it up to twenty fifty. So we extrapolated and we're just showing both those numbers, but we only have to account for twenty years of growth. So just demonstrating that here. Um, and and that graph was found in your introduction chapter um of the comp plan. And then we just wanted to share this information. So with the FCS group and we come up with the. Population growth and the um. Housing distribution. So the projected population increase for Shelton and the UGA over the next twenty years was seventy four oh one. You can see for the full county is fourteen thousand eight oh one. So if you continue along the line for Shelton, you'll see that the that accounts for. Anticipated projected housing units of twenty eight seventy two. And being the only city in the county, your city is and UGA are going to. Have forty one percent of the share of that new growth. So fortunately, we've been able to demonstrate that you can accommodate that growth. So wanted to share some of those numbers and that was what was reached um or arrived at in consultation with the county. So moving on to the comprehensive plan itself, the state has some very specific requirements for which elements must be included. And so it lists those mandatory ones as land use, housing, capital facilities. Utilities, transportation, economic development and parks and recreation is encouraged but not required. Um, and they say it's not required because they didn't provide funding to update that, but you guys already had one. You have a pros plan. We'll get into that a little bit more later. And then you additionally, you already had one for for historic preservation, so we're maintaining that. And then you had one for shoreline management as well. So got some things, just kind of blocking my view here. So some of the priorities we wanted to address with this update were that we would accommodate for the projected growth through infill development. And that will mean like having goals and policies that support it. But then in the future, making sure the development code has. The updates needed there and your zoning um map will be updated as well. We also want to make sure we're maintaining the community character while increasing the housing supply and accommodating for affordability. And then updating the infrastructure planning and the capital facilities and utilities elements. And then maintaining consistency with the countywide planning policies. Okay. Store. Okay, so talked about, we've got these different chapters. What you're seeing today is kind of a scattering. Um, it was included in your packet. You've got the introduction chapter, which really. Kind of dives in. If you don't read anything else, you know, look at that chapter and you'll just see how it relates to the state requirements and other relevant plans. And um it'll give you a lot more detail than I'm trying to go over quickly today. And then chapter three, parks and rec, chapter six, capital facility and utilities, seven is shoreline and nine is economic development. So we've got a slide on each of those. Some of them are fairly minimal changes, like. Um, shoreline, the one that has the most changes from your prior one is the economic development chapter and we'll we'll get to that a little bit um later when we get those to those slides. Where I had you go when I was waiting for my PowerPoint to pull up and I had you turn to a slide or or page in the packet. There's not a whole lot of difference, just chapter two is merging land use with UGA and then adding the climate plan as well. So when you get to the introduction chapter, um, the original or the twenty seventeen plan had a pretty lengthy. Vision statement in there with several bullet points and the steering committee went through an exercise and just kind of. Really zeroed in on a new vision statement. So that's incorporated in your introduction chapter. We give a lot of this background that I just shared with you, like the requirements of the Growth Management Act. We have a little bit of information on your community demographics, so that's the community profile area. So updated the history section a little bit. Um, talk a little bit about the geography and then the population trends, which we just looked at. So this chapter is just, if somebody doesn't know what a comp plan is, you open it up and it explains to you what it is. Um, and then it talks about how it integrates with other plans, like the Mason County Comp Plan, other regional plans. And then we share a little bit about the engagement that has occurred. So for instance, there was a survey that took place, an online survey, and then there were some events that took place. Uh, I want to say a few of them, like the expo and. The Shelton Art Walk last year and this year. And what kind of feedback did we get from the community? So like there was a penny poll where people could put. You know, they're given so many pennies, except we actually did pearls. Um. You're given so many and here's like, if you were going to spend the city's money, what would you spend it on? Would it be new roads, you know, things like that to help kind of prioritize and. Got a big idea board for people to write down things and then like what they love about Shelton and. And then the survey had other questions. And so, you know, we're hearing things like people wanted a splash pad. So stuff like that ends up in the parks and rec element. So there's a little piece on that, but we also have a separate. Public engagement summary that we produced um on activities to date, but it will be updated with. Explain what has, what will be occurring over the next six months with. Opportunities for public feedback with. You know, public noticing, you know, the steering committee's review, city councils review, so that will be updated and it's something that would end up going online. It won't be part of the comp plan, but it will just kind of be a background document. Um, so with parks and recreation, that's unique because you have an adopted park, rec, open space, um, and trails then. So your chapter three is adopting that pros plan by. Um. Through the comp plan. But we're also just pulling in pieces of it. So if somebody just wanted to look at like at a glance, what you could find in the bigger pros plan, there's information in there. But then we also provided a little bit of a summary of what we heard at the community events related to parks and recreation. So that's in there. And then we um expanded on some fun strategies and. We actually also talked about some of the service standards um that you'll find in the development code related to new development. So typically, if a new subdivision comes in. Ideally, you'd be looking at, well, is that going to trigger the need for more parks space? Does that mean we were going to ask park or. To provide funding to go towards existing parks. So level service standards kind of things.
Yeah.
Address.
I can expand on that if you want. But yeah, that's if we require parks with new subdivisions.
And sometimes it comes down to the size of the subdivision. Say it's like a ten lot subdivision. Yeah, I I'm not familiar exactly with Shelton, but sometimes it's just. The number of new dwelling units and the projected population increase, does it warrant new park or a trail or whatever that may be. Um, so there's not a lot of difference. Wanted to give you a summary of the changes. Capital facilities and financing is one that's really just fed by. Uh, your public works department. We do outreach to all the different utility providers, the PUDs, um. With capital facilities, we even talk to the school districts, try to just get information from them. And do some planning, you know, what do we anticipate growth wise? Does that mean? You know, we need to be looking at the number of firefighters over the in the future. You know, what do we need to do to expand utilities? I know you guys went through this massive process in the past regarding wastewater treatment. So that's in play. So it's a lot about coordination and just pulling data together and like, how are you going to finance it? So sometimes it's just identifying what are some of the sources of funding? You know, can you put a whole together the funds yourselves? Are you going to be able to get grants? You just list those out, but typically. If you, you're going to have a six year capital improvement plan, plus you want to look at what do you think it is going to be for the twenty year horizon? If it's in your six year CIP, usually you can use that to help get grants, you know, like the TIB funding.
RCO funding and other others.
Yeah.
Probably other governmental funding, state and federal funding.
So it's just great to have it in your comp plan and usually it's adopted. Um, that is like a an appendancy. And you could change it every year. You should be changing it every year. Your six year TIP, I think that's mandated that you update that annually. And so you can shift your priorities over the years. You you just want it in there, but if you're like, oh, we're going to build this in three years and like, ooh, you know, we needed to do that sooner because of some new development, let's. To year two, but you can go after these grant funds.
Or someone can change because of development, because it could be, it could be developer driven, right?
Yeah.
As we're seeing, uh, let's see, the signal at thirteenth and Alpine Way, that's being, that's being installed by the developer because of the subdivision. Going on to the east. So some of those, some of these CIP projects can change based on. Um, the development that's happening around there. They could be impact impacts or mitigation based on the impacts they are, they are, um, they're bringing to our community.
Yeah, um, it's a very important chapter. When I was a. I used to work for Ellensburg and we, the public works department was pretty good about getting TIB grants like every other year because they'd identified all these things, especially sidewalks. Because as a community that kept annexing. Um, land that was in the county and developed without sidewalks. So they're trying to use the safe routes to school money plus TIB grants and just really. Get the the safer routes to school. And so they did some pretty cool sidewalk improvements over time and. Um, it also helps like get yourself on the board or attend the meetings, like somebody from your jurisdiction. So. Um, I just saw that um happen. Um, it was not something I was part of, but because I was. I would update the comp, the comp plan every year and we always made sure we updated the appendices every year with the six year capital improvement plans for every department. Wastewater, water, um. We we also own lights and gas over there in Ellensburg and just all the plans to make sure that you kept them current so you could be eligible for those grants. Um, and then the next one is shoreline and we don't need to say a whole lot about it. It's really just. Exactly copying the goals and policies out of the shoreline element. All we did was update the reference to the most current shoreline plan and. We were talking today about whether or not we want to like. Really minimize what's in there because you have an adopted shoreline management.
Yeah, we might, it it's on my list to maybe condense down to. For lack of a better term, a bullet point list rather than this, this literally gets into the minutia and has goals, policies, all these things. That are lifted directly from the plan we already adopted, so.
Yeah. So that one, you know, you got a lot in your packet, but this one and Parks and Rec, there's not a lot to them. I'd really encourage you to read intro, the introduction. Capital facilities is interesting. And then this memo goes in a lot more detail about what's different, but. The the version you got in the council packet was. Like a cleaned up version with comments on the side. But online on the website, they've updated like the track changes version, so you can, it's really messy. But you can go and see what changes were like the edits that were made.
We we posted both versions. So if you really want to get into the weeds, you can see exactly what the existing plan says. Then there's a whole bunch of strikeout and.
And it's a lot because sometimes we like move the location of text, so then you just have all this stuff struck out and. We didn't really change much, it just got moved. So sometimes it's good, it gets messy. But it's helpful to see the changes that were made over time. And then the comments, sometimes it will say, hey, we updated this because we got this new information. hey, we updated this because we got this new information about this, this topic. So, um, moving on to economic development, this is the one that changed the most and on page 14 is where you'll see a little bit of information about the differences. And we had taken this to the steering committee a few months back and they'd had a lot of really great feedback. Uh, we had originally done our analysis in 24. And then I think it was January, February 25, Mason County came out with their new target sector study and we hadn't actually been aware of that. So we went back in and we wanted to incorporate data from that study. And so we've got, we've pointed out that at the beginning of the element, we're pulling data from the census, but we're also trying to incorporate information that's extrapolated from the Mason County target sector study. And really focusing on the cut, the industries they wanted to try to draw into the county. But knowing that Shelton is probably going to be the home base for a lot of that job growth because you are the only city and the county seat and that's where a lot of the growth is going to happen. You're going to have some in Belle Fair too, um, Dickinson that work. But so we really expanded on that. And so with all of the chapters, you, for the most part, you're going to see like a narrative describing just information about Shelton. And then it's going to dive into the goals and policies. So there's just a lot more to the narrative with your economic development chapter. Um, we've talked a lot about, you know, sector, um, diversification with healthcare, retail, education, broadband as assets. Um, we've updated the workforce profile, where the commuter data, you know, where people live and where they're going to work. Deeper analysis of workforce needs. Um, we've added some more information about land readiness and then emerging opportunities. One of the things that the steering committee pointed out was our original um, edits didn't include anything about the fact that you've got the creative arts district. So we added more information about the creative economy and that was an important thing that they wanted us to include. Um, we had a section on barriers to growth and we kind of updated that as well. Uh, where the workforce gaps are, what the limits are with infrastructure, which ties into your capital facilities, you know, being aware of where you need to make those updates in infrastructure. Housing affordability can be a barrier. You know, if you have people that can't afford to live here or have to go elsewhere, or if they live here, but have to go elsewhere for work, it goes both ways. So trying to address that. Um, we expanded, we gave more information about the local partnerships with expanded roles for the city, Mason County, the port, PUD three, Mason Health and, um, Macecom. And then we hadn't had any information in there about the Shelton School District's academies. So it was great to do a little more research on that and make sure we're incorporating that and also what the library offers up and Olympic college and just making sure all the partnerships were agreed upon because that's a lot what the Mason County study had highlighted, but it was also just important in general, like how can we promote economic development? What can we do to support the existing businesses? And so you see a lot of that in the narrative, but then then the goals and policies too. So um, the steering committee had really wanted us to add some goals and policies that were more supportive. Not just attracting new growth in businesses, but how to support the existing ones and also attract new businesses. So, um, we rewrote a lot of the goals and policies to align, align with the target industries. Have a little bit more with measurable outcomes, um, and land readiness. And then there's some additional information supporting entrepreneurship. So there was some emphasis on youth employment, life skills training, small business growth and sector-specific metrics. So that's one that we love to get feedback on. If there's things you feel that shouldn't have been included or you felt we missed something, you want to hear it. So I'm guessing you probably want to feed your comments through to Jason who can send them to me. If you've got them. Um, and then with next steps, we have this joint meeting today. And Mark alluded to having probably your first meeting in September being another joint study session. We're going to bring back, um, housing and land use, which are really key ones. And we'll have some future land use maps and just talk about potential zoning ideas of maybe having some multifamily areas that weren't previously zoned out and some residential target areas and just kind of really talking through that to talk through that.
And expanding our commercial zoning, like as an example, um, our, our commercial corridor down Olympic highway, all the way to the south end of town is zone the same as the shopping center area, you know, where, where the big box stores are. And it just, you know, we've, we're probably going to recommend cleaving those apart, have more of a big box oriented type retail commercial area and then more of a town centric, I guess you could say, smaller, smaller type business commercial zone rather than a catchall that can make it hard for certain businesses to locate because it's, it's meant to catch all. So it makes it hard for some to come in.
Yeah. So we will, we'll have new chapters to review at the next meeting and then we got this refinement stage. So we, we want to refine, we want to get feedback, um, hear from you and the community members. And then when we get to a stage where we feel like it's a final draft, we need to send it to commerce. They have a 60 do, 60-day review period. Simultaneously, we're doing an environmental impact statement. Um, that will go out, um, it's already drafted. There's a draft, but we don't want to put it out till the transportation element is done. I don't know that that will be ready at the next meeting or not. We hope to. We had to spend quite a bit of time trying to find a company that could do a transportation demand model because we really needed to analyze where intersection improvements needed to be made based on all sorts of different factors. I'm not a transportation planner. I have team members that do this, but we finally got TRPC to take that work on, but we had to wait for other work to be finished. It's Thurston Regional Planning Council, but it will be really neat, unique because we'll be able to tie it into the, uh, when you, you're, obviously your, um, transportation pattern, patterns and your road networks tie in to what's happening in Thurston County. But we also want to be really careful that we don't have the state trying to impose certain improvements on the city of Shelton that can't afford to do some of those major improvements. So that is being conducted right now. And so when the transportation demand model is finished, we'll issue element existing. So the transportation element has an existing condition. That's completely written. It's the future conditions and forecasting that we're trying to finalize. So you'll get a lot of information. So I del, I kind of went off on a tangent there, but the, um, the EIS will go out for the public review as well. Simultaneous to the 60-day notice commerce. So there'll be this time period where council can still be reviewing and talking and giving feedback. And it's just a matter of if it changed from what we sent to commerce, we're just going to track it, you know, like in a spreadsheet of like, here's any additional updates we made. And then eventually we'll get to having public hearings with city council or a public hearing. You could always decide to continue them and then adoption. So the goal is to have it adopted by December 2025. And you know, it is doable, you know, we just got to get the transportation demand model done. But I'll just say this, if, if it bled into January, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't impact you. There's nothing that would happen to the city, but our goal is to get it done in time. They set these deadlines and then different things occur in each community and maybe she shift priorities and you decide you want to make a change to something, but that's why we want you to see it now. We don't want it to be this, like December is the first glance at it and you're like, hey, what? That's not what we envisioned in our community. So I think that, that any questions do you guys have? Um, this is really just summary.
Just have a comment. Thank you for being inclusive in your process. Thank Jay and Jason and yourself and your team. For, um, we have a really diverse group of people that were in there. We had a scientist, we had a chamber of commerce, we had, we had a real estate agent, we had the mayor myself and, um, we had a student from, from Cedar High School.
Now.
So we had a really diverse group that had input and you guys made a lot of combinations for us to get our input in and meaningful and, and timely. So I wanted to thank you for making that process smooth and also, um, thankful at the same time because we have named everybody, but, um, it was really great to have that inclusiveness in the process. Like to thank the group and our city staff for, um, including everybody.
It said public comment commerce or?
So the public can comment on the EIS and then also, I mean, as you open it, I mean, you can have these study sessions and decide to take comment there, but your public hearing will definitely take public comment.
I knew that.
Yeah.
The 60-day review does public have a right to comment commerce?
Commerce doesn't ask for public comment, I guess, in their review. Uh, they're just making sure that we're meeting this, the statutory requirements of the plan.
They basically use the same checklist that we started with and they start checking boxes. Do they comply with, you know, for example, the, the, the legislation that Kirsten went over, they, do they accommodate that? Yes, no.
Yeah. Usually what happens with the commerce review is they split all the state agencies. Um, so fish and wildlife, ecology, this, um, historic, archaeology and historic preservation, Wash Dot. All those agencies usually will review it. If they don't comment, they have no comment. But you know, fish and wildlife might say, hey, I have this feedback. So that's been the most interesting one is fish and wildlife because they keep changing their, they've been updating their guidance documents over the last couple of years and they recently came out with some new stuff. I don't think it's really going to affect the comp plan itself so much, but more like the critical areas update that needs to come later. Fish and wildlife habitat areas. But that's a good question.
Very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
The whole year you've invested, I'm sure we've got another six months.
Let's hope we're short in six months, but yeah, we, we have the, actually the deadline by the state is adoption by the end of this year. I think the state has recognized that, um, this is a large lift, especially for small communities that don't have internal staff that can do this work. We've got the luxury of having some consultants come and help us out, but, um, they're helping out a number of communities at the same time. So, um, it's nice that we have a little bit of leeway and in fact, even received a six-month extension on, on this. This is supposed to be done by July.
June 30th.
Yeah, by July 1st. So.
But they extended it for the last two cycles.
Yes. Yeah.
And one of, I think we brought this up during one of our meetings, but when a single property owner owns a huge chunk of land that's zoned for commercial and residential and they just not tuning into that land, is, is there any options for us to either change the zoning so we can have it elsewhere? That kind of zoning or because I mean, we've got properties that own like 900 acres of land and they've done nothing with it for 20 years. And I know that holds up some potential other UGA, um, areas for us. It wasn't in the UGA, this is in Seagulls, correct? So I mean, what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
But to get more space in the UGA, but we've got all that 900 acres already in the city. It affects our, our growth pattern, doesn't it?
Well, there's a couple of things you're talking about there, but if you wanted to change the zoning itself, you can do that partly through accommodating it in the comp plan with a future land use map. Like this is, this is the zoning we would support in the future. And then you can also do area-wide rezonings through ordinance versus site-specific rezone. Site-specific rezones need to be supported by the comp plan. So your comp plan needs to show like, yeah, we think as a city in the future, this property would be appropriate for this type of use. Say it's commercial, industrial, residential and make sure your future land use map is set up to allow for that. But then you need to separately adopt your zoning change. And there's, like I said, there's two ways, area-wide rezones where you do a lot of different properties within the city all at once. Or site-specific rezone, like typically that is a property owner coming forward and making that request to the city.
Well, and if I understood your question correctly, you know, you're, you're essentially asking if we have this land zoned, say it's commercial and it's fallow over here, this developer is not developing that land. Is that limiting us from designating commercial land elsewhere, right? And I think the answer is no, as long as we can show that through either population or these.
Yeah, like it's long you don't take away from enough residential to accommodate the housing requirements that you have, you can add more commercial. You're kind of analyzing the employment projections, but yeah, you might have some land that just stays that way.
I think residential might be the more specific hindrance. I, I think if you will, if you're designated, if you have designated residential property that's not being developed.
Yeah.
Yes, then in you, you're limited in how you can grow residentially. Yeah.
And to my knowledge, our properties will.
There's, there's, there's mixed use. There's, there's.
So there's mixed, there's residential, there's industrial.
Well, one thing that came up during our meetings was a lot of the UGA areas historically um, polluted. We can't even use it for commercial or residential at this point. So that's something that my, we might want to think about in the future is how can we un-pollute an area to make it, um, suitable for growth and development and for residents. But, um, that's something that was a major part of what we were talking about in a lot of our meetings. It's like, well, here's some space sort of here in our map. Oh, well, um, historical pollution there. So we don't know if we can use that. But anyway, um, just wanted to throw another wrench in the complicated or the question that, um, you brought up. But, um, a lot of our growth is limited by where is it okay to build and okay to grow? Because a lot of the land has been um, restricted to us for the future unless we want to, um, risk a lot of different health, health hazards. Anyway.
No, no, that's great. Thank you.
And affordable.
Yep.
Yeah, we, we still have the lack of utilities at certain areas of our community in the city limits, let alone the UGA. So there's some, there's some limitations to, um, what, what one might think is economically viable for, to develop these properties. Now as realistically, as we've talked about before, as these grow, you know, as we keep moving these utilities and this infrastructure out, it becomes more economically viable for somebody that might be further away from those facilities. Now we're hoping that, you know, that continues to take place because that's how, that's cities grow and progresses to the outskirts of those UGAs as those utilities progress out, um, by hopscotch-ing it around. Septic systems and wells and, and, uh, development that might not meet future land use, that's what's going to limit and hinder, um, some of this progressive growth that, you know, we're addressing tonight.
Right. There is nothing else. I appreciate you coming down here and, uh, you've got some new items for discussion, like. Discussion will be adjourned at 6:47.